All right, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Roll call?
Good evening, Commissioners. A roll call. Chair Davis?
Here.
Vice Chair Feng?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg? Commissioner Wong?
Present.
And Commissioner Joe is absent, will not be here, is excused.
Agenda review, does anybody have any comments, changes they want to make to the agenda tonight? We're good? Okay. Minutes, we have two sets. Review, I want to start with the older one or the newer one? Older one, September 17th.
Motion to approve?
There you go. That one, push that, the little silver guy. All right, votes? All right, that passes, four zero. And October 15th? Any changes to that one?
Yes, one amendment was that for Section 9, new business gateway at Millbury Station, I had recused myself, so make an amendment to note that I had recused myself based on allegations of bias against the project and to avoid any potential lawsuit with the city.
Got it. Do you want to bring them back, or can we approve them with that change?
Things are rather an important change. Do you? Staff can bring it back. Yeah, that's fine. Sure. Anything else?
That was it? No other comments or changes? Rest of it looked good? Yeah? Okay, good. All righty. Public communication is the time reserved for people who would like to speak to the Planning Commission about something that is in our peer view but is not on tonight's agenda. I don't have any speaker slips right now. March? Did you fill out a speaker slip? You will? Okay. Thank you.
This is just very briefly. I see that Commissioner Joe isn't here this evening, and I just learned today that from, and I don't know if you all know it, but I learned today that henceforth, all of the Planning Commission meetings will be broadcast live by MCTV, and then they will be available on demand for replay. So I know it's been a big issue about, you know, the Planning Commission, why don't they get, why don't we get to see their meetings or, you know, on MCTV? And that's been a question lingering for many, many years. And so today, when I learned about it, I was very happy, and I thought I would share that with all of you. So, and especially Commissioner Joe, because at the last meeting that I was at, and I was talking about it with her, I asked her if she would please bring that to the attention of staff, and she did publicly. So she deserves a lot of credit for doing that as well. Thank you.
No others? Okay. Then we can close that and move on to old business, and we don't have any. So, public hearing for 408 Juanita. It's a design review to allow the demolition of a two-story split-level residence and the construction of a new two-story split-level residence, and a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required second-story setbacks located in the single-family residential zoning district. It's continued from September 17th. Staff report?
Good evening, Commissioners. This project was, is a project that's what's continued from the September 17th Planning Commission meeting. The project is located on an 11,250 square foot lot located at 408 Juanita Avenue between Santa Florida Ave and Santa Susana Ave within the northern portion of Millbury. The interior lot contains a single-family residence, including a non-conforming one-car garage, attached garage, and is own single-family residential. As was mentioned, the Commission voted to continue this application from the September 7th meeting to the November 5th meeting tonight to allow the applicant time to revise the design, to reduce the second-floor massing, and increase the setback on the 404 Avenue, or 404 Juanita Avenue side of the subject property. In addition, the Commissioners requested the applicant work with the neighbor at 412 Juanita Ave to replace the side fence and ensure construction minimizes, construction dust is minimized on her house during construction. The applicant redesigned the two-story rear horizontal addition to address the Commission and neighbor concerns. The applicant added a three-foot, six-inch to four-foot upper-floor setback on the elevation facing 404 Juanita, and reduced the floor area ratio by close to 1,000 square feet from 47% to 39% FAR. In addition, the applicant has agreed to work with the neighbor at 412 Juanita to replace the fence and minimize construction dust, and this has been added to the project conditions of approval. The existing residence is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, split-level residence with a living room, kitchen, family room, dining room, and attached one-car garage, and a large below-level crawl space at the rear of the residence. The existing residence is a split-level residence with a single story at the front of the structure and two-story at the rear. This is the existing site plan. The existing building footprint. And the two neighboring homes. This was the previous site plan for comparison purposes that was presented back on the 17th. The addition located here, and then the two-story, and then the addition in the back, the three-car garage. These were the previous elevations. The front is similar, is a single story, and then because it's on a slope, there's a single story, and then it slopes down toward the back where there's two stories. And the previous elevations, the north and south elevations, indicates that there was a request for a setback exception, there was no setback on this side, and the neighbor requested some setback to address privacy concerns. So, the new proposed site plan indicates here the addition portion to the rear of the home, and you'll note that it's been reduced in size and mass. There's permeable paver driveway access to the back to a two-car attached garage, and it's single, the two-car attached garage is a single story. These are the front and rear elevations. And this is the north and south elevations, and you can see the setback that's shown on the revised design. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application. The applicant is available here also to present the project and answer questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff right now? Not right now? Okay. Applicant, would you like to come up?
Thank you, Sam. My name is Johnny DeRosa. I'm an architect and also the applicant of this project. First of all, apologize for I didn't have a chance to listen on the last public hearing because of the traveling. But I did talk to my people, I talked to the staff, and also talked to surrounding, whoever listened to those comments, you know. We went back to the drawing board, and no question about it, the house is kind of a little oversized at a time. So, we take a big step back, we cut substantial amount of the whole house, shrink it down to, we cut, actually not 1,000, it's 929 square feet. So it's close enough, you know. So, it's quite a bit of cut in there. So, and also, I want to emphasize some things about the architectural design. First of all, the existing building, they have much wider frontage with the garage door. We take away the garage, and we shrink it down. So, bulk and mass in the frontage, we maintain a low profile, one-story profile, a long Juanita. So, and also, we are very focused on bulk and mass proportion. If you look at the side and the back elevation, all the, you don't see big walls, and everything will be consistent, window, everything has to be seriously, detail-y designed to incorporate with the whole design. And also, in terms of the privacy, that some neighbors concerned about that, we are improving, in fact, we're improving the privacy. At present, we are phasing them as all the bedroom, bedroom windows. But we change it right now into all kitchen. Kitchen window, and also, the addition area going down to the basement is all staircase window, it's just for architectural purpose. Actually, it's difficult to view on that. And also, the roof pitch from 612, we lower it down to 412. And it's much lower than our right-side neighbor, and it's equal height of the left-side neighbor. Fence is no problem. We're going to build a whole new fence for the entire, and we're not going to, the owner's going to take care of the cost to do that. So, I'm happy to answer any question from the Planning Commissioner, or also maybe the audience.
Do you want to ask some questions now, or do you want to take public comment first? What do you want to do? You have, yeah, you have some? Do you? No? No? I don't.
I do. So, there was a former resident, a former neighbor, that wrote a fairly lengthy letter about concerns about such various things, such as drainage and windows, privacies, and alignment of the windows with lining up with the neighboring property. Can you, have you, are you familiar with that letter?
Yes. Drainage, we have civil engineer already designed a drainage system to take care of all the, wherever the drain, I think it's going to be improved. Right now, they don't have any drainage system at all, so, I mean, wherever, go to the nature, you know, park lake on the back. So we're going to have everything taking care of the drainage, so it's all mechanics, it can be done.
So you're familiar with the letter, and you, have you had discussions with that neighbor, or addressed, adequately addressed the question?
No, I haven't addressed, but we addressed on the drawings. So, in terms of the privacy, I don't see a direct privacy who are affecting the neighbor, particularly on the right side, in terms of the window. If they see any particular window have a privacy issue, we will do opaque glass for that particular window. So we're willing to do that. But at this point, I don't see any window who have the, as I mentioned before, right now, we have bedroom window facing to them. We are improving, we turn that to kitchen window. And there's, I mean, there's no bathroom, and also, their building is much higher elevation than ours. Instead of they looking down, instead of we looking up on the other side. So, that's, if they really look at the, any windows specifically have issue, we turn it to opaque window.
Okay. I don't have the letter with me right now, but if the other Commissioners are familiar with it, I believe that their main concern was the sizing and the mass of the building, which you mentioned, you're able to cut down to compromise with their concerns, and then the drainage was addressed, and the privacy in windows, you can address that also. So, was there any other concerns that we recall from that letter? That, I think those were the major concerns, so I appreciate you addressing those.
Yeah.
Those were the major concerns, and I'm so glad you decided to scale down the project. It's still over there, but at least it's in the middle of the road, so I do appreciate that, as I'm sure your neighbors do also. In the plans, in some of, the plan numbers, they're all dated 7/14/16. And the front of this shows the October 23rd date. However, some of the pages, I'm trying to think of which one it was, still shows the four-car garage?
I don't think so. We never have four-car garage, I think we have only three.
I think it's gone.
Yeah. Right now, it's two.
However, when you look on page A204?
Okay.
It's still showing, looks to me like, okay, I guess it could be, no, it actually shows four, to me.
Those are just panels, panels on each door?
Well, okay, it could be drawn a little bit clearer. I, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Because they're, they're like, totally separated. When there's a two-garage with two panels, it's like this with the little one in the middle. So, and I would like to talk to staff about that. I think in the future, when we have redesign of plans, even though the date was the sub-middle date originally, if we've made changes, it would be nice to have an updated page that shows that the pages have been updated, not necessarily from 7/14/16, but to the current date.
Well, the other way to do it, we can put a Delta 1 on the top, and put a revision date on the top.
Something other than only a stamp in the front, because a stamp in the front is really only for that page, there could be some other pages that were.
I understand that, yeah.
You know, not corrected. And I guess it could be observed as two doors. Okay. Once again, I do appreciate that. Also, if, in the past, when they show the adjoining windows, it would be easier if we had, you did show the outline of the other property. However, you, you know, you didn't seem like I saw the two adjacent properties, so that the windows, we can be sure that there is no other duplication of windows.
Okay.
And this is for staff to make sure that next time we do that.
In our elevation, we did dot the neighbors' windows.
The windows also, I noticed the roof, but that's fine.
Through the chair, Plan Sheet A101 indicates the location of, the window locations for 412 Juanita and 404 Juanita, the adjacent homes.
Perfect. Saw the roof, but I didn't see the other. Good. Well, I do appreciate that you scaled it down.
Thank you.
Appreciate that a lot. And I'm also glad to see that you built it down into the hill, so it's less obtrusive.
Right.
All right. Yeah?
Also, I'd like to comment also on drawing A107. There's substantial change to the layout from the garage also, that before, upon entering the house from the garage, there would be almost like a corridor going to the lower level, and the stairs immediately going upwards. And we had really big concerns about that, because it appeared it could be, you know, almost zoned like a, you know, a duplex, that you'd have separate living areas going in from the garage to the bottom and the top. And I commend you that the new layout, it's more integrated, like a, you know, single-family house, so that it's.
Yeah. They only have five kids, you know, so, they needed space. They're a big family. Yeah. I know, I know what you mean, yeah, yeah.
Commend you on making it more circulation, more livable. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any speaker slips? Does anybody want to speak on this project? All righty, we'll close that portion. Comments? Discussion?
I think, you know, through the plan, staff report on it, I guess I can certainly appreciate, you know, the reduction of the massing and the size of the house, because I think that was one of the major, I think there were several major concern from last time, one of which was the size of the house, the height, and the setback on the right-hand side, neighboring, was it 412? 404, excuse me. Yeah, neighboring 404. So it seems like all those things were taken care of, especially the fence as well, which is, you know, sort of a goodwill from the applicant. The additional setback or the four feet on the second story is now, I saw it on the plan, when they have it there. I mean, the reduction of the size is pretty significant, it's about 929 square feet. And I think that the roofing part of that was also a very good feature, how, you know, they reduced the, sort of the slope of the roof from a 612 to a 412, which reduces the massing of the roof as well, which makes it more integrated. So, I think it's nicely redesigned. I'm okay with it.
I'm good. Is he going to make the motion, or no? You want to make a motion?
We didn't ask for any, oh, we did ask.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
No, I mean, I agree, I think it's a nice redesign, it was a significant reduction in the size of the house. Still a nice big house, but, but that was big. And you worked with everything that you were asked to do, so, thank you.
So I motion to approve the project.
Second?
Yep. I moved the design review to allow the demolition of the two-story split-level residence and the construction of a new two-story split-level residence and a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setback located in the single-family residential R1 zoning district.
Subject to the conditions attached?
And the findings?
And?
Oh, sure. Of course.
Yeah. Including the special conditions.
That's right.
All right. So we have a motion and a second? Votes?
We vote?
I do. Four zero, 10-day appeal period. Thank you. All righty. New business, Millbury-Sarah Station at 200 El Camino. This is a study session to receive information on the design review permit application for the Millbury-Sarah Station project in advance of a future public hearing where the design review permit and master sign program will be considered for approval. This is for information only. Staff?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Gina Gazar and Harry Burrows, who will be presenting the staff report and then the project. And in addition, we have the consultants here available to present and answer questions.
Do you have a last-minute change?
No problem.
All right, so. They're both PowerPoint.
I know, they have the one that says revise.
Okay.
Yeah, PowerPoint.
Well, we're going to have to toggle. All right. And I'll return that. Good evening. I'm Gina Gazar with CSG Consultants, and I have been on behalf of the city processing the design review permit application. So, tonight, we prepared a brief presentation. Staff wants to, of course, describe the purpose and, the purpose of the design review process, and review the development proposals to date and approvals to date. So, of course, the design review process gives the city the opportunity to review the project for its aesthetics, and you have a chance to look at architecture, massing, signage and monumentation, materials, and open space, and other aspects of the project that weren't looked at in detail during the site development review. You'll have a chance to ask questions and hear a presentation from the applicant. So the Millbury-Sarah Station project is approximately three and a half acres near the BART station. It's bound by El Camino Real and Sarah Avenue to the Wetz, Linden Avenue to the south, and Millbury Station to the east, and there are single-family homes on Hemlock and some commercial property fronting. There are three buildings that you will see. Building R1 is a 10-story mixed-use building with residential and office, or residential and commercial. R2 is also 10 stories and has approximately 3,700 ground-floor retail and 322, 325 apartments. And Building C1 is nine stories and is office and commercial. It also contains some amenity components such as a galleria and a lobby. So, the purview of the design review is, of course, the Planning Commission will have the opportunity to review and see in greater detail. So today, we are just going to review, and no approvals will be made today, no action will be taken, and you'll have a chance to really get in and see what the applicant proposes. So, to date, of course, in early 2016, the MSASP, the Millbury Station area plan was amended and updated. The final EIR was approved. In early, or in April of this year, the area station, or the, the findings of significant impacts, the overriding considerations, and the mitigation monitoring program was approved. And the development agreement for the Sarah Station project was approved, as well as the site development plan and the vesting tentative map. So, with that, I will turn it over to the applicant. Let me get back over. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm taller than the mic. I'm Paul Wolford, I'm the Design Principal with HOK. I'm joined by Bill Higgins, he's the Principal with Architects International, and we wanted to talk to you about the project.
Oh, there is a hand mic, that's gonna be easier. Yep, you gotta turn on.
Is that working?
No.
No? There you go, okay. Okay, slide advance is this way?
Okay.
So, I think you all know the development site. So if, as I, as Bill and I walk through this, if there's any questions, please just, just go ahead and ask. So, it's been described, Gina just described it. This is an aerial view, so we all know where we are, here's, you know, the station, Millbrae Overpass, El Camino, and then the commercial office building and the two residential buildings. There's a ground-floor site plan, so you can see that there've been landscape improvements on every side of the proposed development. Pardon, Bill? So, just to place everyone here, here's Linden, here's Sarah, and you can see the site improvements around the entire block. Of course, California Drive will be improved. There's access to the building for loading, parking below ground, and the retail basically fronts on these areas. At the commercial office building, which I'll just speak about more, because that's the project that our team is doing, there's a two-story Galleria that actually is directly across from the BART entrance. And as the buildings go up, they actually are crowned with, in two cases, roof gardens. This is a view, if you're standing here, coming off of the BART station, looking back at the site, so you can see the scale of the site in relationship to the scale of the BART station. The office building basically is, has this two-story Galleria below, and then up above it has a glazed curtain wall of metal and glass, largely what you're gonna see is glass. On top of the glazing, it's not easy to see in the render, but we provided sample materials, there's what's called a ceramic frit, and so, does everyone in the planning commission know what we, I mean when I say that? So, it's basically a kind of ceramic paint that's baked onto the backside of the glass. What it does is it knocks back light transmissivity, so it's a solar response, and so it allows you to have a glass wall, and from inside see out, but it can knock back anywhere from 10% to 90% of the solar gain inside of a building. And so we're using it also to be sustainable, and we're also using it to create pattern. So one of the things that the building does is, is it uses the percentage of these frit patterns, they wash across the building, and they go so, from denser to lighter, and lighter to denser, and they move across this in waves.
Will there be a reflective, outer mirror-type finish?
Not mirror, no. I mean, glass has certain reflectivity, but it'll be basically a low-e coated glass, largely clear. And here, as I was talking about this, you can see, this is sort of how it goes from a little denser to lighter, and a little denser to lighter, so it'll feel, in a way, like a wave rolling across the facade of the building. These are elevations of the building, so you can see that really what we're using is, is the big moves of the geometry of the architecture. So the architecture is intended to feel very much like two caressing arcs in plan. They step up, and they also have layers of glass on top of them, so it's not a traditional office building that you would see driving down 101. Here's a plan of the Galleria, so there's accessible points at either end of the block, and then there's a small amphitheater here inside the space. There's this two-story space, fronting with retail and the lobby to the office building. This is a kind of bird's-eye view, if you, if we took the roof off of this space, what this would look like? These are some sort of precedent examples of what this kind of space can feel like. There's a conversation that we're looking to do something using public art inside of the building, so some kind of display that would be a dynamic display is one of the things that's been considered for the interior of the lobby, which of course would activate the building throughout the day and in the evening. So imagine that coming across the arced back wall of the Galleria. This is a view across the street, so you can see the scale of the space and the idea of this expansive, you know, dynamic wall inside the space. If we're on top here, at Linden and Sarah, looking across, you actually can see down And this is a more detailed accounting of the different surfaces and materials that are gonna be on the building, but basically it's vision glazing, metal channels, so it has a kind of silvery, shimmery quality to the architecture with the gardens on top. And Bill's gonna talk about the residential work.
Oh, Mr. Wolford, can we go back to the last two slides there? That one, so that's the southern end of the building?
Northern.
Northern, northern? Okay, and can we go back one more? This, so, this is the southern end of the building?
Right.
Okay. So there's a, the rooftop garden would be on the northern side.
Your microphone, please. Because it's not true north, so it's a little more easterly.
And you're probably familiar with the MSASP, Millbrae Station area specific plan, where originally we're conceiving of a pedestrian bridge from the building over to the BART station on the second level. Can you tell us what, where that idea went, or how it got discounted?
Well, currently, that's a conversation really out of the domain of our purview, we're really working within the property lines, and so that would be frankly a conversation with BART or Caltrain, and that's not been part of the charge to the design team to do. Is it possible? Sure. But it's, it's not currently in the design.
The second level of the gallery there, that's open, how, how many stories is the Galleria?
Two.
Okay. So it's conceivable that there could be a pedestrian bridge connecting that second level with the BART station?
Possibly.
Because it's open, it's a public, public area, Galleria.
Right.
It's not office space.
No, yeah. It would have retail, you know, garden space inside, the artwork.
I'm gonna address that. There are a couple things. If high-speed rail comes, they, from what they've said, they don't like the station as it is, so they would be doing a different station, a bigger station with different layout. In trying to work across, right now, there isn't an end, an end that we can get to, to make a bridge work. We did look at it, though. The other issue is that the, the ideal way for this to have been, would have been to have had it go where Linden was essentially the connector, and you, and you go off from Linden, and you just carry across, because you've got the opening to El Camino there, and you carry it across, but we don't control Linden, so that wasn't possible. I think you could lay out a situation where it would work as a retrofit down the way, but I think unless and until you know what's gonna happen with high-speed rail, to do something now, there probably isn't gonna be what they want, so.
Sorry. Appreciate you having those considerations. Another thought, too, is that it's very open to the southern end, the station access is on that southern end of the building, and the view of the BART station, you know, it's predominantly viewed from the southern end, from the Burlingame side. And so, you know, you know, for us, within the city of Millbrae, you know, we're very proud of the BART station, and we see it as a very dominant feature of our city, yet we wouldn't be able to see it clearly because it's obstructed by the building. And, you know, it'd be better if it had a statement that this is Millbrae. You get off the station, instead of looking, coming out and you look at Burlingame, we wanna see Millbrae, we want people to know, this is Millbrae, not this is Burlingame. So if there's any way to address that, or have signage, or, I'm not sure.
So, we actually were very conscious of the, that sort of aspect, that Millbrae has this kind of nature of a kind of art-like architecture by virtue of the BART station. And so I, if you look at the architecture of the building, what we did is, is we took something that was sectional in the BART station, and we made it plan-driven in the tower. So the intent was, is that the tower, the office tower itself is very much in conversation with the BART station. Because of its proximity and relationship to the Millbrae Overpass, if I went back... Here. So, because of this relationship here, the BART station actually won't be really covered up by it. This is gonna be kind of a, really a nice frame to it, and there'll be, you know, obviously denser developments on both sides, because that was part of the, you know, the area plan. But we worked very carefully to make sure that this felt like Millbrae. There's nothing like this building anywhere. I've designed the building, I've designed buildings all over the world, and we were very careful not to just take something, pardon me, that felt like it was from somewhere else and apply it to your town. In fact, working with the planning department over the last couple of years in the process, is that notion of this big fluid moves, and the idea of taking the pattern of the glass itself and letting that have a kind of wave-like quality, felt very much appropriate to both the sense of the nature of transit here, and also the fact that there's a kind of arcing and aerial, almost a kind of fluid architecture just to the skyline of Millbrae because of your proximity to the airport. I mean, if any community is really the location of the airport, it's really Millbrae, so, you know, we were, Commissioner Wong, I'm very sensitive to your comments, and we took them to heart in the design. I feel confident that it will be a handsome addition to your community. Any other questions, or? And the glass samples are here, too, if you wanted to look at them. So, we're not, we're not proposing a mirrored glass, just a, it's basically a clear glass. Thanks, Paul.
I'm Bill Higgins, and I'm with Architecture International, and we're architect responsible for the residential component, working with HOK on the master plan. While this slide is on, it's also good to see that this was developed as a composition of buildings, and the, as you can see, that some of the architectural gestures in the office building are somewhat carried through in, like, what we're calling the R1 building, the one closest to El Camino. This has sort of a concave face to it, to face El Camino, and we terminate Sarah Street with a concave face of the R1 building, so it sort of receives you as the terminus. And you can see that, sorry, go back. You can see that even in the shape of the building, so it's sort of acts as a receiving element of the building, not just a broad face. So the residential buildings, like I said, are, we're trying to be compatible and treat this as, as a cluster of buildings. The R1 building, which is the one closest to El Camino, has a entry element to it that sort of frames the building and sort of acts as a entry statement coming from the north. But the buildings, as you can see, also try to scale themselves down, they're 10 stories tall, but we, we introduced a element of a six-story banding across the major facades to relate to the articulation of the office building. So this reads as a common architectural vocabulary with glazing, that'll be more transparent, it's residential, it'll be a blue-gray tint for solar performance, but we also introduced balconies and a composition of balconies and bay windows to articulate this as a residential building, it's not a commercial building. And so the elevations, sort of, some buildings are in front of each other, so it makes this particular one look like one long building, but one of the things we tried to do, and I'm gonna actually maybe go back, is articulate the R1 and R2 building, even there are two buildings, to try to articulate them as three buildings. You can kind of see that here, this is one building, but we broke it at the midpoint to, with a glass bridge to separate the upper floors, to make it read like two buildings instead of one long facade facing east. The other thing we, the two buildings, the R1 and R2 residential buildings share an entry courtyard, and from that courtyard, we made, it's gonna be landscaped, it is over parking, but it'll be a landscaped entry court that will help residents see the identity of their entry points, whether it's in the R2 building or the R1 building. So this entry court will be sort of the receiving court for residents and guests, although residents will have access to their units from the parking below. And just as Paul mentioned, in the office building, the residential buildings will also carry some similar materials, which are also in the materials board, a tinted blue-gray kind of glass, the railings on the balconies would be more transparent for, for visibility from the living rooms of the units. And the articulation, again, was to create a, to break up the facade into three zones, a two-story low zone, this middle zone, which has sort of a, a banding in, of this, of six floors, and then the top two floors, reading almost like penthouse levels, even though they're not actually two-story high units, but creating a two-story high top to the building. We also performed some shadow studies in recognition of the location of the buildings next to the Hemlock neighborhood, and so there are two, sort of, I would say, options here that we looked at. One is the, the current plan, which was submitted to the planning commission and the city council, which, and these are different views, which has a full build-out along the California Drive extension facing Hemlock. The, the second option was one where we stepped the building after the sixth floor in a, in a, in approximation of this 45-degree angle that's listed in the, the specific plan. In the actual development agreement, the first six floors of the, of the R2 building are in compliant with the 45-degree plane. So with this is an option, too, which steps the building back to try to reduce the scale next to the Hemlock neighborhood. So what we did was we looked at different shadow configurations for June 21st, September and March 21st, and we also looked at December 21st, but, you know, the, the sun angle's so low that on the north side, you would get mostly shadow in the early morning. But I want to walk you through, these are just selected times of the shadow study to compare the option one, which you see on the screen, or option A, with option B. So this is at 9:30 on June 21st, and you can see that hour, there are some shadows, because we are on the south side of the Hemlock neighborhood. At the R, the option B, you can see, pulls that shadow back. We're particularly interested in this particular location on Hem, on the Hemlock neighborhood. At roughly after, actually after 10 o'clock, the shadows recede, because basically, this is north, north is in this direction, so, starting around 10 o'clock, the shadows recede, and through the rest of the day, the shadows actually start to come in from the west. As you can see, this is option B at 12:30, and at 4:30, at, towards the end of the day, the shadows are really coming almost completely from the west, and to the point where Hemlock neighborhood houses are actually... from the west and to the point where Hemlock neighborhood houses are actually shading themselves from the low-angle sun. So that's option, A, option A and option B, there's hardly any difference, except for the scale of option B is reduced in scale. March and September 21st, which are the two equinox, you'll see at 9:30 in the morning the option A, 9:30 in the morning, option B, a slight retreat, reduction of the shadow. But after, okay, after, after 10 o'clock roughly, after 11, the shadow starts to recede and moves away from the Hemlock neighborhood. And of course, as we get to the end of the day, the low-angle sun, there are complete shadows coming in from the west and the residential buildings have no impact. So I think these are the material boards, and I think the next, which you have on your, on your counter there, mostly it's going to be a series of different glazing, residential and office, sort of a blue-gray tint. We're looking at metal panel colors for the residential, not just a single color, but a series of colors to give some animation to the facade. And who's going to talk about open space?
Excuse me. While we're on the subject of talking about the shadow study and 45-degree plane, I think on the MSASP, there's contemplating that for the neighborhood, putting up against the Hemlock Avenue, there'll be a 45-degree setback on your R2 building?
Yes.
So where are we on that? In terms of designing, we see three design here. One is the original design we see way back when. The second design is a one step back, and then the third design was sort of the gradual step.
If I might, if you look at, I don't know if you have a copy of the development agreement, but if you look at the development agreement, it was agreed with the planners in section 2.2 of the development agreement that the, it's the top, we, we agreed to remove the top four floors the way it's shown in B to satisfy the 45 degrees. And that's what the council agreed to in the DA. So that's the adjustment that we made. It does pick up the 45 degrees for part of it, but it isn't complete. But the way the planner looked at it was that we were meeting the intent by doing that. If you look at many of the shadow studies here, you'll notice that even the houses within the neighborhood at one and a half, you know, one, a story with a roof shade the yard. I mean, it isn't, it isn't just this, this building. The, the condition of, of the approval, the way it's done is what we've designed in the second, in the second draft. If during the general plan, for example, if the city should rezone Hemlock, you know, one side of Hemlock right now is C1, the other side of Hemlock is R1. There's some discussion about it should all be C1 or R4 in that location. And it would create a connector, I thought, at least I believe it should create a connector to Hillcrest. Because to have the California Drive stop where it does in the plan is not ideal for the city. The ideal solution for Millbrae, and I know it's not what the neighborhood wants, but the ideal solution for the city is to have traffic go to Hillcrest and bring traffic to the heart of downtown where the effects on, on business, I think, would be very positive and would take traffic off of El Camino at an earlier point on the road. But that's something to decide in the general plan. If that change would occur, then the zoning would change and we could come back to the city and ask to have the additional four floors put on. Right now, what we've designed is compliant with the development plan and compliant with the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan, according to the planners.
Based, based on option two meaning?
I'm sorry?
Based on the option two you were showing earlier?
Yes, yes.
So what is the intent then of showing these three different alternatives?
It was to show, I mean, we did it in, because that, it was just as a historical understanding of what was done and what we presented it. I mean, we went through, these weren't the only two. I think we did like five or six different iterations as to how we could address this. And from an architectural standpoint, from a buildability standpoint, from a cost of construction standpoint, and from a reduction of the loss of units, it was, it was thought that this was the solution, number two, was the, was the best. It achieved the goal, the intent of the, of the plan, and it, it allowed for it to be done in a way that's cost-effective. To do it in a staircase where you have each of the floors going up, you have a lot of occupied space under balconies. And if you, if you, as a, as a, as a land use lawyer, the, the one thing that happens is that you get a lot of lawsuits where you have water intrusion from balconies that are above occupied space. It's a very difficult thing to, to work well with. We have one, one floor where that's going to happen, but having seven of them, I think, would be a nightmare for most builders and developers, so. And, and we didn't want to lose that many units. We have an obligation to provide 15% below market, and these units to the north have views to San Francisco, so they're very important units. We're, we're losing some of the ability to do larger units on the upper floor because of that. We'll have to do smaller units to make it, make the 444 fit, but, you know, we'll do that to comply with the plan. Hopefully, you know, the city decides that a different zoning in that area is appropriate and we can do the whole thing, but we can't do that now.
Does the stepping contemplate how far you step back?
I'm sorry?
Does the stepping, the single stepping on the top four-story, does it contemplate how far? 15 feet?
15 feet, yeah.
So you're comfortable with option B?
Yes, well, that's what, yes, that's what they've allowed, and that's what we agreed to do, and that's what we've designed.
Okay.
I mean, we'd like option, we'd like option one, but that doesn't comply with the plan, and until it does, we can't do that. The development agreement does allow that should the, should the zoning change or the MS, the station area plan change, that would allow that, that we don't have to go back through the development agreement again. It's already taken care of.
Yeah, I think I remember something about that, yeah. So how much smaller are these units going to have to be?
You know, the two bedrooms will become one bedroom and the three bedrooms will become two bedrooms. That's sort of the way it's projected. And it's unfortunate because those are, you know, that's, those are the premium units with views to San Francisco and the airport. If I might just give you a little history here, and one of the problems with all the change in planners, when this issue came up, that there was going to be this 45-degree, at the time, the planner involved was Christine Diorio. When I raised the issue to her, she said, "Well, I have the authority under the plan to make a 10% adjustment, and this isn't more than 10%, and we can make that adjustment." We never had anything in writing on this, this was just what she explained to me, she felt to her authority. Well, she left, and when, when the new planner came on board, she looked at it and she said, "No, you have to do something to satisfy the 45-degree. I'm not going to agree that it's part of a 10% that I can, I can adjust." And so this was the compromise that we worked out with the subsequent planner. I, aesthetically, I don't think, I think it hurts the building's aesthetics, it hurts its marketability, it hurts and costs quite a bit. And we have tried to work with the neighbor, but it isn't even the neighbor's problem. I mean, this is a problem that, you know, the city really has to decide what it wants that adjoining neighborhood to be. And, you know, we, we can't control that, and until that's done, we, we're just stuck with where we are. So we accept it. One thing I wanted to clear up, on the glass, one of the issues that we tried to address was to not have glass that would attract birds. And this frittered glass that's on the office building, one of its other positive aspects is that it doesn't attract birds. In other words, because, because it's like, if, if you go to the airport and you want to see, you want to see what this glass will look like, the facade of the international terminal, the front of it, has frittered glass. And it's white and it looks like clouds and it's really, really pretty. And I, I think the effect that they're looking for in creating this sort of a wave pattern is going to be quite discreet, but it'll be very pleasant. And, and I think it's a, a very positive aspect of the project.
I think that, you know, when we designed a project this large, then you're not just building homes and office spaces, but you're developing a whole community. And you're developing a living space that people will reside in, but ideally, it would be a place where they would also, you know, balance the, the living space with the working space and the recreational space, almost like you're developing their entire, you know, way of living, way of life. So I see there's a very segregated portions of, you know, the commercial, the business space and the residential space. How much additional thought have you given towards just the communal space such as circulation and shops and restaurants and, you know, recreational facilities that these people, or where do you see these people going to, you know, restaurants and recreation? Or are they going to have to go out of this facility, or is there enough space inherent to develop?
Well, we had, in the, in the review at the planning commission, actually the council, we increased the, the retail space to roughly 25,000 square feet. I, I think it's closer to 30, actually. And we did it under the, the office building, and we have some live-work space that isn't going to be restaurants, but it's additional retail potential income to the city. And then we have the, the R1 space, which is going to more than likely be a restaurant because it faces El Camino and, and would provide that to, to the residents. It's, given the shape of the property and given it's facing the railroad, it's really hard to get a lot of, I mean, you can designate stuff as retail, but getting the traffic and getting the, the tenants that would be attracted to be there because they, their expectation is to have the clients and the customers is difficult. I mean, if we had more frontage on El Camino, that would be a different story. We have, we have roughly 85 feet of frontage on El Camino. The street, the, the new street takes about 100 feet out of, out of that one facade so that we don't really have much in the way of frontage on El Camino, and that, that would be the source of retail. The remaining properties there all have a tremendous opportunity to do retail, or if they're somehow assembled, to do retail. That, that's still an open opportunity in the, in the Millbrae Station Area Plan, and we expect that with time, that will occur. Because they will have, they will have the residents there, they'll have the, they'll have the customer base there. And to the extent that the, our one project has retail in it, there will be that many more potential customers in proximity to be able to go there. I mean, there is enough retail, I think, for what we're doing right now that we can't, there, there's no more that we can provide. We do have also, besides the pool that you see in the, in the R2 building, there is a large, you know, exercise area that will be a gym for the residents to use. And they have the, the upstairs amenities that will be in both buildings, both the residential and the office building, for additional recreational uses. They're not, they're not, in the, in the R1 building, that space is not a apartment. It's, it's a commons building or commons area for the building. And the same thing's true in the, in the office building.
I know the traditional, you know, design residential units and commercial space, you know, we could look at it like a standard, you know, development, but just looking forward to like building community, you know, if there's other elements to make this, you know, they always talk about a destination, right? A place that attracts people, whether it's like some public facilities on top, like restaurants or observatories or more recreational facilities where people would really be attracted and really love and enjoy living in this community, almost like when you design, you know, a senior, senior community, you know, like, I know there's places in the East Bay, whole complexes and communities like Rossmore, where they provide a lot of, you know, recreational space and meeting, gathering places and, you know, activity rooms and so forth. But I mean, just looking at this, it's, it's very massive and it's very, scale is very large compared to surrounding areas. But if it could be, you know, just thinking of it more as an attraction, to make it more attractive for people to build community, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, the, the ability to do that in, in this location is limited, and the, the offshoots from that, trying to do that in the wrong place is just, you're going to end up with just open space. I mean, you need to have, you do need to have an attractant. And it has to be something that, you know, people are drawn to. A facade on El Camino draws people. But when you get to the backside and you're along the railroad, that's tough, it's a tough venue to, to tell a merchant, for example, you should put your store here and not on El Camino. I mean, that's just, it's just the reality of the marketplace. It's not, it's not our projection of that. This is, I think, you know, just common sense. If you had to choose and you were, you were the retailer or the restaurateur or the merchant, where would you prefer to have your, you know, your, your shop on El Camino? And we just don't have that space.
All right, just a last thought that, you know, again, you know, this, this will be your landmark, it will become the Muzzi Building, so make it proud for yourself and for the city of Millbrae.
It'll be the, it'll be the Sarah Building, and, and the reason it's Sarah has nothing to do with Unimpero Sarah. Sarah is the name of the town my parents came from and why that, that street and why their business was called Millbrae Sarah. And hopefully that name stays.
Just a quick comment. I, I think it is important to have everything there, however, what I envision on this project, because it is on the west, the west side of the railroad tracks and everything, I'm hoping that it integrates more with our own downtown. It's certainly within walking distance, and if we get a lot of people coming into our downtown, then we have space in our downtown to expand into all of those things that you're talking about, so that our downtown would have a lot more vibrancy than it is right now because of the fact that Victoria is right there. And it, it is a signal, and once you cross El Camino, both Millbrae Avenue and Victoria are signalized so that people, it's going to be easy to come over to this side, and then you'll have the whole expanse of, of the whole Millbrae Avenue and Millbrae. So I'm hoping that it will generate a lot more activity in our own downtown, right, than we have right now.
I, I think that's, you know, I think that will be a consequence of having...
A lot more people.
Those people, yeah, definitely.
And they're going to be walking because they can't drive anyplace. They'll be stuck in traffic.
Most of them hopefully will be taking BART or Caltrain.
Right. They'll take BART and Caltrain, and then at nighttime, they can walk into the downtown. So that's what I envision, anyway. We've been waiting a long time for something like this to happen, so.
Through the chair, if you don't mind. I mean, I do think that, you know, I share some of the concern of Commissioner Wong to the extent where I think, you know, on the R2 building and a portion of the R1 building down below, I understand what you said about there's only a limited amount of frontage on El Camino real, where you're going to attract a lot of foot traffic. I understand that notion, but I think... But I think this project itself, you know, is providing close to 280,000 square feet of office space, bringing in over 440 units of residential housing. That in itself is going to be thousands upon thousands of people, you know, moving into this little square block. Whether it is a daytime traffic where the office is going to be occupied, I mean, you're essentially creating your own traffic there. And not to mention also, the TOD2 is also going to get developed, and you're going to attract a lot more office space being rented. Hopefully, we'll bring in some incubators or tech companies. I think having more retail space down, I mean, I do see opportunities on the R2 building on a very low level, I mean, on the bottom street level and a portion of the R1, you know, if you were to have more office space there, I mean, one, that could serve as a retail space for the people, to serve the people who are in the office space.
Those are, that's where the live-work space is, on the first floor of that R1 building, the part that's not corridors or not part of the frontage restaurant area. And then you have to have a lobby. And today, the lobbies in apartment buildings are drop-offs for Amazon and Company, okay? And they take up a lot of room. And when you, when you look at what the normal requirements are today for just the lobby areas of large apartments, it's, you have refrigeration going on, people get stuff delivered, you know, that has to be refrigerated, they get stuff at Christmas time, they have to have, you have to have the space for them to just leave the product. So lobbies are taking up more room than one would traditionally have thought in an apartment building. And you've got, we've got live-work space along the first, first part of the floor there. And there's...
The first R2 building.
And that's the R1 building.
We were looking also at with live-work along here, so this whole stretch of Sarah here and then along here, so...
Mike, please.
We had to create, for example, on this, on this space here with live-work, we had, because of ADA, if you make it commercial and they have to have access. So we had to make an adjustment on the, we couldn't have, we're going to have stairs, but we tried to make it so that you have a platform that allows for wheelchair access along the front without creating individual...
There's elevation difference there from the street?
Yes, there is a grade difference, yeah.
But I'm sure you can make that work. I mean, it's going to be a brand-new building. You're going to do the whole site, regrading the whole site, right? You're regrading the entire site, so I'm pretty sure you can make, you know, the ADA access possible.
There's a 19-foot grade from this, from here to there, okay? It doesn't, it isn't a flat site. It may look like a flat site, but it's not. And it has a steep grade from one end to the other. So trying to accommodate a podium that ties together the TOD, the development, and to create the parking garage that you have to have to provide the space for them, when you play with all of those variables, you have to make accommodations. And the question that was raised about making the space live-work came late in the project, something we tried to accommodate more, quote, "retail-type use for." And in order to accommodate that with all that, the planning that had gone before that for three years, the adjustment was to make a handicap access and make it across the frontage so that it would work for all of the units, rather than creating individual Z's of up-and-down space for, or elevators per unit or something. I mean, it would've been ugly. And so doing it in a uniform way, I think, was aesthetically good or better than what we could have done otherwise.
I'm pretty sure there's a quite bit of design work that has to go into this and a lot of consideration that has to go into this in order to make the ADA access to work and put in the garage where, you know, the truck can drop things off and have a feasible lobby for your residential building. But I'm just, I'm just really hoping that, you know, Millbray is so lack of revenue in general, right? So having a little bit more space where you can actually put in these businesses and to generate as much revenue as we can would certainly be a benefit.
I don't disagree with you. I think that would be, you know, positive. But I think one of the things that Ms. Quigg pointed out, I think, is also true. When you, when you go to downtown Millbray, it isn't that there's a lack of retail space, there's a lack of retail occupancy. That very often is...
Can you move your microphone up?
You don't have the, you don't, you need more population, you need more traffic. And that's one thing that this would provide, and it's foot traffic.
I do agree that, you know, it's going to provide quite a bit more residents as well as transient traffic based on the office space, which I think is a good thing for the city. I don't disagree with that. I mean, downtown is a separate discussion in terms of how we should revitalize it, how we should do the BID, so on and so forth. But just, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you can, as much commercial space as possible. I think just providing that space on El Camino frontage, I understand what you're saying, that the notion only that space is attracting foot traffic, but I don't think that's necessarily true, given the fact that you're actually bringing quite a bit of transient traffic through this development.
Just so we're clear, it's currently 30,000 square feet of retail. So there is, it's the R1 building and then the C1 building, the C building, the first floor of that is all, you know, the galleria, and then there's, there's the, there's retail, and then the rest of that floor is also primarily retail. If we can find a tenant to take that much space in the retail, we will. So, I mean, if there's a restaurant user that wants to take the first floor of the C1 building, that's what it's zoned for. I mean, we've got, that's the primary zoning. It can, it can be office, but it has to come back to you as a, with a use permit. So it isn't that we can just take 25,000 square feet of retail and turn it into office. We have to come back and show you that that's the use, but it's available for retail.
Okay. And when you're speaking about the gallery, and I still remember, when I'm looking at the rendering, the gallery, it's all enclosed on three sides with glass?
Yes.
Okay, and so, and then you have a designated hours of opening where the public can walk through?
I can't remember offhand, but it's like, it ties to the BART schedule. So it's like from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night.
Because when I look at this, I think that was part of the open space that you guys have used to count it as part of the development.
Yeah, it's part of the open space, but even if you take that out of the open space, correct me, I think we still have, we still meet the requirement.
I mean...
Is that correct? Yes. Yeah.
The gallery is not required.
So, sorry, they're not capturing what you said?
So, we actually meet and exceed the open space requirements, so the galleria is a plus-up on top of that.
Okay.
And just to, just to sort of go, maybe it's not in there. Here we go. To your point about activating the street, I mean, I think, you know, when we have conversations in communities, what folks really are talking about, right, is one is tax-based revenue and the other is making the street an active place. And so one of the things that you can see here in this plan, this illustrative plan, the peach-colored zones are dedicated retail, but as Vince was saying, the entire ground floor in the development agreement can be either retail, it's a commercial use. So it could go all retail or it could go office depending upon, you know, the demand at the time. This is the area that Bill and Vince were talking about, the live-work units. And the intent is, is like townhouses, they activate the street. So there's a node here, there's a lobby node, there's another node, there's a townhouse node, and then there's the galleria, which will be a quite vital place. It's immediately adjacent to the BART station. When you get off, you'll see it. And it's, as Commissioner Quigg was saying, it's one of the kind of key stops on the way to get to Millbray downtown. So it's going to be a new welcome kind of living room, if you will, for the community. A couple of things we did want to share while we had time with you all today was, is just the nature of the open spaces. So this is one that's enclosed in two stories. The hatch zone around it represents streetscape improvements. And then there's several different types of plazas and galleries, which will have different kinds of paving and plantings so that it feels distinct and more intimate. This is a plan that talks about vehicular circulation, so what we've done is we've chronicled ride-hailing drop-off, transit-in, loading, everything's been detailed in great thoroughness. Just the overall circulation context of bicycles and other routes, you can see here, this is all illustrated for you. In addition to that, all kinds of site furnishings and site lighting has been detailed and put So there'll be a rich landscape on the site, nothing like that existing there currently, obviously. Here's an example of the street pole lighting, so it's going to be handsome and contemporary in the bollard lighting. There's a detailed signage plan for the entire site, chronicling where signage would be, both on the street and monument signs, signage on the building. So, for example, this is the signage one might see that's permitted to be higher up. Signage on the street, so sculptural graphic signage, something that'll be interesting and feel unique. Building signage as well. Monument signage for parking and identification and wayfinding. Retail signage, just so that you have a sense of what you can expect to see as the development comes to fruition. And then finally, key kind of building and identity signage, this kind of marquee opportunity on El Camino in the residential building. Having worked on many of these plans, the development team and the design team have taken great care, and I think you'll be very proud of what's going to be introduced to the community. It'll feel active and rich on the street. It'll feel significant in terms of the quality of the architecture and the buildings and the materials of those buildings, on the landscape and on the skyline. And, and I think it'll feel like Millbray because the architecture isn't emulative of other architecture. It's really designed to be distinct and for your town, so.
So the one that you just showed a little earlier with all the landscaping and all the signage, I don't think it's in this package.
No, that was my question. When are we going to get that, what you just showed us? Because that's what we need, I think, to react to a study session.
I'm not seeing that.
Check all that out and give you guys direction. We don't have that.
I'm sorry, if it's not in those packages, it's my fault.
Okay.
So I'll get you that thing by tomorrow. I'll have them all printed out, what this program is right here.
Yeah.
Or I can send it to you electronically.
Oh, no, please in print.
Print, okay.
Yeah. I was kind of looking forward to see where the signage was going to be and what was the signage going to be looking, because this is more of a design, and I'm really not seeing as much of the design as I had hoped to see, so.
On signage specifically?
Everything. We didn't, when we said this was going to be a study session for design review, we don't actually have designs to review, to give any guidance at all in a study session. We have reactions to questions of incompleteness, so we have your shadow study and a few other things, but we don't, we don't have that, just that's what we need. That packet that you just showed us, we don't have it. So we can't help you right now with materials and whether we think the design is good and the curves are nice or the, nothing.
Well, the curves are pretty delineated, but like, the signage and the art...
Paving and art and landscaping, we have, we have none of the details, so.
We'd like to see that.
We're looking forward to seeing them.
Can I get a little bit clearer on the art? You know, we, we don't have any art commissioned. That's something that, it's really pretty early for us to be able to do that because you need to, you need to be further along. Are you really expecting us to give you sculptures or what? I mean, that's what I'd like to put there, but I don't, I don't have any idea at this point. I've been, I've been too involved with all the other stuff.
All the others.
About, you know, the artwork. I mean, we do want to have in the galleria, I love this concept of having, you know, the active screens that you see in some of the office buildings in San Francisco that change, that isn't, it isn't a constant thing. And it isn't, you know, it's not marketing, it's just beautiful art or beautiful landscapes or beautiful animals or, you know, where it changes during the day. That, for me, is an area that people can enjoy because it's enclosed, it's protected...
Exactly.
And they're there. There's an area between the two buildings, the C1 and the R2, where because of the, I have a concern about wind. I've always had a concern about wind on this site because I've lived on this site. And I want to find a large artwork that would shield the wind through that gap, because it's beautiful to see on a plan, but if you want people to be able to sit there, you're going to have to create some protection. And if I can find a water sculpture that is big and wide and acts as a shield, I'd like to, that's what I'm looking for. I've got some pictures, but they're, you know, they're very primitive and they're not, nothing commissioned. And then, you know, some sort of a statue or whatever between the two residential buildings, but I don't have any, I can't, I can't give you artwork if that's what you're asking for.
You're doing a pretty good job of giving us concepts, though.
Yeah. Okay, if that's what you want, I can do that.
Because, I mean, early, it was described as a dynamic display or something, and I went, oh, what's that? But you just did a better description there, but you can include things like that.
Yeah, the dynamic is like a big, big screen.
I get it now. Your second description was better. But, I mean, you put that in there, explain it to us, because, you know, these guys can all read these plans too, and they'll understand better, too.
Okay, okay, you got that? All right.
But it's everything.
Like the other commissioners were saying, too, is that, you know, having the landscaping, you know, all the drawings that we have and the designs are very, you know, just the massive building, so it looks very sterile, I want to see. Like we're talking about before, the environments for the people there. And especially the environment also for the neighboring properties, too, in lieu of not being able to have more step in 45-degree, 45-degree angle setbacks. You know, if there's some well-placed trees or work with the neighborhood to provide a little buffer zone with trees or more space...
Yeah, we had talked to the neighbors about doing that, and whether they agree with me or not, I'm still open to doing the, what they need in the way of additional tree line and protection of their property.
And privacy and...
Still do that, yeah.
Noise. And also even landscaping, I know there's landscaping here next to the building on the east side, but if there's even more development along the BART tracks, because I know that, you know, there's a lot of noise and vibration, and if there's more bushes along that fencing, it could provide more buffer and a sound barrier for those residents. Something to consider.
I served in the planning commission in San Mateo County, and one thing that a sound engineer expressed to us and explained is that trees don't really do a good job of breaking up sound. And that side of the building is on the easterly side, and so getting enough sun even for the vegetation that's shown is problematic. I mean, you know, we're going to put the trees there, but the reality is, it's going to be a struggle for them because of the way they're oriented. If you saw the shadow studies, that street on that side in the afternoon gets virtually nothing. We did, if you, at Magnolia, we did find some trees, pepper trees that worked well, and some of the planting that's shaded, you can, you can do small shrubs and plants that will grow well enough, but it isn't as strong an area for sunlight that would produce, you know, large, large trees or even a hedge. And the setbacks there for the width of that road are, you know, it's going to be a very, very active road, and you want to have sightlines coming and going from the garage that are clear. And so having too much vegetation would create an obstruction and perhaps a hazard.
I think just try, I'm sorry, through the chair. I think in order for us, a lot of things that all the commissioners said has to do with, if I may just try to summarize it, you know, through this packet, we're not able to get what the pedestrian experience would be walking through, say, you know, on Sarah Avenue, for example, walking down Millbray Avenue, how I would look at the building, what kind of pedestrian experience are we going to have? As a BART rider, for example, if I'm arriving the station or just, you know, taking off from that station, what is my ridership experience going to be knowing that this big building is on my left-hand side? Driving down, for example, El Camino Real or Millbray Avenue, looking up that building, what's that, you know, what's that experience going to be? I think that's going to help a lot for us to try to be able to visualize it, if you can, you know, bring in all those things, whether it's just artwork. Artwork would be more like if I walked down Sarah Lane, for example, what I would see. You know, so those are the type of things that we're looking for from a design review perspective.
We'll see what we can do. I mean, to create a, you know, a video that would do that would be enormously expensive, I have to tell you. I have to tell you. I mean, we've looked at it, but it's, it's a lot of money. And I don't know that it necessarily, it necessarily resolves all of these questions. I mean, you can, you know, it's, it's not easy, but I will ask them to give at least some shots, some, you know, dynamic shots along the way so that you get a sense of what a walk down El Camino might be, or along the edge of the station. If we can do more in that regard, we will. Okay?
And inside the areas that are open space now in between the buildings and everything, what is it going to look like in there? You're just showing us some green here.
It was, it was very abbreviated, and I agree.
Yeah.
You need, you need a little more pizzazz, and we'll...
Absolutely.
Give it to you, okay.
One more thing, I don't have, don't remember the exact words you used, but you said something about the Hemlock neighborhood, that it's sort of in the hands of the city now to figure out what the neighborhood's going to be, but I don't really completely believe that. And just like we would ask a neighbor upgrading their house and making it better to work with the neighbor next door, I wish you would go back to working with the neighbors on Hemlock. Talk to them some more.
You know, we've done, I think, we've, we've done, we've done that, and we're still open to do it.
Open?
Unfortunately...
Why not just be chatting?
The discussion has mainly been one neighbor, and we've had extensive discussions with him, and, you know, unfortunately, the, it didn't turn out to be productive. And I'm as upset about it as he is, because I would like to have my four stories back, but I, it hasn't been, and so I've moved on. I don't know what else to do for them. I mean, I, the landscaping for their yard, to try to give them additional privacy, which is of concern to them, I've told them I'd do it, and I'll do it. I mean, it's, you know, the landscaping, a landscaping plan that they indicate, I provided them with a landscape engineer to show what could be done, and they seemed to like it, but nothing more came of that. And then the issue became the height, and could we arrange something where they would get an amount of money to take care of this problem? And unfortunately, in negotiations, that didn't go the way we, I think both sides hoped it would, so.
Maybe you can keep talking. You've got some time.
Yeah, yeah. But you have to...
We'd ask neighbors to keep talking. You guys are neighbors either way.
But you have to understand, the city is a big part of this.
I understand we have a role, but I...
No, 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 you don't understand, I don't think. The problem is, I'm willing to, you know, we came to an agreement at least at one point on what needed to be exchanged in the way of money. But the problem is that when I listened to the city council, the city council was unwilling to say that they would do anything, that I had to bring the plan forward and then maybe they would approve it if they thought it was good. And I understand that's what they have to do, because that's what the process is. But, you know, when does the money get paid? Does it get paid when we make the application? Does it get paid when the council says it's okay? Or does it get paid when I get a building permit? Now, if you were going to put down a substantial amount of money, when would you want to have certainty that you had a project in this day and age? I asked for it on the building permit. The owner was unwilling to agree to that. I'm sorry, you know, if I'm going to pay big money, I expect to have security that what I'm paying for, I'm going to get. And I'm not going to know that until I have a building permit. And that was, in the end, that was the big issue.
Through the chair, if I may, I think, should we take some public comment about that as well? And then perhaps let the MUCI's team finish the presentation, if you are already finished the presentation?
Yeah, I mean, if you have other, you know, if you have other things that you want us, this has been helpful, in telling us the gaps or things that you want us to add, I think that's, you know, we've got a couple weeks here, we can, we can do some of that. But if there's anything else that, you know, you don't see that you were expecting to see, tell me, because we can try to fill those holes.
Right, well, I mean, what we don't have is a design to give you feedback on.
Right.
We didn't, this isn't the design. We got the wrong packet, so we need to get that packet, so then we can react. And we may have more holes after that, maybe we won't, but until we see it and we can, you know, comb through it.
I mean, you've given me, you've given me something, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just one more question, is this going to be a gated community? Is it going to be fenced in and...
No, absolutely not.
Chair, if I can propose, we can take some public comment after this, and then we can reopen the discussion.
Does anybody, I don't have any speaker slips, there's one.
Hello there. You hear me? First of all, I'd like to say hi to Marge. I don't live in Millbrae, I live in San Mateo, and I really came here because I wanted to support the Gateway at Millbrae for the other side. But I want to say you're all doing yeomanlike work, and I like the idea, what you're doing here for Millbrae, and I think it's great, and I really support your project, and I wanted to see it go through. I'm for you guys. I'm for, I'm proactive, I'm an ex-veteran, and I used to work for Millbrae, but I'm going to keep this short and succinct, I said only two minutes. Basically, I would like to see more public benefit with the city and Caltrain, BART, and high-speed rail. I'd like to see some sort of connector from one side of the station, one side of the area, to the, to the, some sort of comprehensive program where maybe the Gateway project, the Republic at Millbrae will work with doing a bridge underneath the area, have a central area, like in Palo Alto, a California street station, where they have an underground pedestrian bike. Oh, they have it at Alma, too, between Whole Foods. They have great, they have great pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure in places like Palo Alto. And I'd like to see everybody get together, the city, your group at Sarah, the plaza here, and then a comprehensive program to get something really beautiful in the center of this area, in the public venue, not having a connector between, having a connector between the two buildings, between your lovely project to BART is a great thing, they need that, too. You know, connector above the, above the station, a bridge between the two buildings, that's a great idea, and I think you guys are coming together with a great package, I'll keep it like that. But I think we need more, we need more connectivity to bring pedestrians into this wonderful multimodal, multimodal station. That's what it's called, a multimodal. We have BART, high-speed rail, Caltrain, Samtrans, and with this new development on both sides, both sides now, with the Republic at Millbrae, and you're a great project. I'd like to see a comprehensive program, a comprehensive project where everything will come together, and it'll be a great place for people to meet in the center of it all, have some sort of a wonderful, safe place for people to come, walk, bike, and something beautiful, with a fountain, whatever, whatever you guys want. So that's it. I just want to see, I'm for everything here, I'm for you, I want to see your project go through. I'm on your side. I just want to see more public benefit so that people can walk, bike, in the center of everything and have a fountain. We need to look at Palo Alto, what they've done at Alma Street between their Caltrain that connects two sides of the city. Millbrae is a beautiful place, it's like whenever I drive through St. Carlos, the city of good living, when I think of Millbrae, I think the city of good living. There's no bad side of Millbrae. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marge.
Next up is Ron Raquel.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I really do like this project that the city is endeavoring to accomplish, but my main concern is the egress on Millbrae Avenue from westbound to eastbound, and I have yet to see a concrete solution to the problem. As you know, there is only one turn lane going into BART from west to east, and I don't know if you've sat in traffic at that signal at Millbrae Avenue, and even at Magnolia and Millbrae Avenue, it could be very time-consuming. The developer did address the traffic on the east and westbound quarter, but have yet to address it for the people coming from west to east, and there's only one BART lane going into BART, and that is really unfathomable and unconscionable. You are going to have tons of people coming into this wonderful project, but we are going to have an 880-quarter scenario with people coming from west to east, heading towards 101, and I have yet to see a concrete solution to this problem. And it's very disappointing that no one has really addressed it or pressed the developers to make it easier for the people to come, for the people here. The quality of life will suffer quite a bit, and once the developers are paid and everything, everything will be fine, but the residents will be left holding the bag, and it is very disappointing that no one has even addressed this for the residents. It is a main corridor, and you're going to snarl El Camino Real and Millbrae, especially at the 76th station, and it's just very disappointing and appalling that no one has even addressed it for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sharon Mahoney.
I live at 504 Hemlock, so naturally, I'm concerned about the Hemlock neighborhood. This project, with the two-story, 10 two-story buildings, two 10-story buildings and one nine-story building, we just have nightmares about it. Why 10-story buildings? You know, many of us have been driving around the whole peninsula, looking at all the new housing going up, and of course, we need new housing. And we see four-story buildings, five-story buildings, six-story buildings, we don't really see 10-story buildings. And we wonder why 10-story buildings, because it will really be an eyesore in our neighborhood. And I know that it will affect the sun and the light, because I can see, I know what's like in my backyard now, and I know just, I get some sun, yes, and I really think it'll be taken away. I, we always, and the neighbors, we've talked also, saying, the balconies will be facing our back, be facing our homes. We'll lose a lot of our privacy. And it's, everybody has talked about the traffic. Traffic now is horrible, and I can't believe that people will come and park down below, and then they'll just do pedestrian walking into the town. I just don't believe it. People love cars, and I'm afraid that that will just be worse. What we are, would like to have, the neighbors I've spoken to have suggested perhaps that it could be a town hall meeting with the residents who are going to be greatly affected, that's us, we're going to be negatively affected by this project, but maybe we can come to some conclusions that will help everybody. So that is just a suggestion that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Ducote.
Good evening, I'm Christina Ducote at 500 Hemlock. He's going to pull up a plan for me, but before we get into that, I just want to kind of tag off of something Vince said about discussions. I want to make it really clear that those discussions have dropped on his end, that we tried to come to an agreement, and quite frankly, I felt really bullied with his team of experts and attorneys, and it's just been a really awful process. And we hope that he will take a recommendation and come back to the drawing board to discuss our concerns, which I've outlined in a letter, so you have kind of the details of that. What I really wanted to show you that's absent from this design, that perhaps you can weigh in on, is what is going on here to accommodate the neighborhood, right? So you've got all these beautiful concepts, and clearly, what's missing is the assimilation into the neighborhood. I mean, talk about design, there's no design that addresses how this project is going to either assimilate or preserve that neighborhood feeling that we have. Again, Vince, the applicant has ideas of rezoning. We're not interested in rezoning, we want to be our residential community, and so at a minimum, I feel very strongly that a design review really needs to hone in on the impact, the landscaping, the building materials, all of the critical elements that's going to make this project successful, but specifically on what we have to see as neighbors. I just, I can't say enough. The other thing is safety, I've talked about how I have concerns about the height of the retaining wall, so when you get into the design review, if you could also look at the height of the retaining wall here, it's very low, and I'm really concerned, and the applicant knows this, that with cars driving and so much activity going on, a very low retaining wall just concerns me as the homeowner. So, good luck, I know you guys have a lot of work ahead of you. I think Sharon's got a great idea, town hall meeting, some kind of committee that would address some of these concerns, as I am not alone in how we feel about the assimilation to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Ducote.
Okay, so I'm not going to address the same things that she addressed, that way you don't hear, you don't hear it twice, okay? You have the letter. Couple new revelations came in this meeting, okay? So I got a design, I got the packet via certified mail with a couple set of different looks, and so now we understand that the applicant is indeed pushing now forward the design that does the actual setback that comes closer to the actual 45-degree requirement that's in the code. That's an important piece, because one of the things a design review is supposed to look at is code compliance and making sure that whatever's approved is actually in compliance with all regulations and policies. That's, I think it's, what is it, 1010, 2500, C2 in design review, okay? So this is an important piece, make sure that it complies with the code. The second piece, it's important, I'm going to quote the code, "Architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and grounds are inkeeper with the character of the neighborhood." Keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So I got a little confused, and I don't mean to be trivial here, but a lot of emphasis on the BART and how it fits with the BART, but not a whole lot about how it fits with a neighborhood that sits right up adjacent to it. In fact, we tend to gloss over it, oh, there's a little shadowing, oh, in the neighborhood. But if you live in that neighborhood, it's not a little thing. And we haven't, so we haven't been against development, and I'm going to say that again, not against development in this city. What I want is a fair treatment by the developer who's coming in and putting in this project. And there have been discussions, and they did not end to, in a positive resolution, and I think despite both of our efforts, we can still possibly get there. I'm not opposed to that. But I want you to pay attention to some of the words that were used tonight to you. One was, rezone the neighborhood. That helps the developer get his units back, okay? That's a solution, just to rezone the entire second, second street. And besides, not the entire side of that other street is commercial, just a few of the homes are. The second piece was, open up the street, bring California through and bring it, and bring that into. I'm sorry, but Vince, you know me, I don't see rezoning and a California, opening California, keeping with the integrity of that current neighborhood. That's a residential neighborhood. It benefit, doesn't benefit any of us living there now to have the street open, bring California through, or to ignore the fact that we've got northern-facing balconies looking down on the street. None of that really helps with the intent, with what we have existing in that neighborhood. It's a requirement. The last piece I want to talk about is, "The proposal should not be detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city and will not pair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed to be erected." All right, we request you, as part of your study, look at the impacts that this project will have on the Hemlock neighborhood as it's designed, and also specifically to our property. The residents have objected in numerous forums to the north-facing balconies because of loss of privacy to the residents across the street. of loss of privacy to the residents. Across the street, I am the one most directly impacted. If you sit in my house, you've got buildings approximately 60 feet away with north-facing balconies into my home. That's real. We want to make sure we talk about the block out of sunlight. We want to talk about traffic congestion, and also in terms of values to our homes. We've talked to brokers. During the next five to 10 years, as this development's going up, we can expect an impact to our house values as this goes up. It's part of the process, right? But it isn't a real impact to us. So in final summary, I request you include a survey of the residents, as Sharon asked for. I think it would be good to have a, have some feedback from all the residents. Please make sure we're following the code and following compliance, and we look at the neighborhood as it exists, and I'm open to a discussion at any time to restart Vince. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nathan Chan.
Hello, my name is Nathan. I live at 151 El Camino. In previous city council meetings, I've spoken about how I think that transit-oriented development of the flavor of TOD 1 and TOD 2 are definitely very necessary, and I want to return to a theme that I brought up at the last planning commission design review for the Republic Garden project, as well as some of the comments that have been made here, and finally, Commissioner Fung's remark about what the pedestrian experience is. So, I want to tell you a little bit about the pedestrian experience right now, seeing as how I live across the street. From the BART station, I cross El Camino to go to the BART station, and I take BART pretty much every day. Right now, it's a very pedestrian, unfriendly route to get to the station, so you can only cross at Victoria or at Millbury Avenue, neither of which is super close to the BART station in terms of directness. So, I, if you go out to El Camino during commute hours, you will definitely see people jaywalking across Chadbourne, which of course is extremely unsafe, given that it's a six-lane road. Even once you cross El Camino, the most direct way is to get to the station is crossing one of the parking lots of the businesses that are on El Camino, and even then, right now, you have to walk along the old convalescent hospital to Lind, I think it's Linden, before you can get to the station. Something I learned just a couple of weeks ago, there is an entire other staircase on the other side of Linden on the BART station. It's a really big staircase. There's two stairs, stairs there, and I've never used it because there is no direct way to get to that staircase as a pedestrian coming from Millbury. I liked one aspect of the project proposal, which was the, saw a pedestrian corridor between the buildings C1 and R1. It looks like you could, as a pedestrian, walk through part of the project to get to that second staircase, but I'm a little concerned to see that's also where the parking garage entrance is. Also, right now, even with the limited amount of traffic coming down California and then turning onto Linden, that blind corner is quite a death trap for pedestrians, many of whom just cross where the curve in the street is. So, I think there's a lot of potential, as this project is being developed, for the planning commission and the city more broadly, to think very carefully about how to enhance pedestrian flow from El Camino Real and the rest of Millbury to the station. Like I said, I like the aspects of the project in terms of how much open space there is to get through it, but if there isn't an appropriate amount of traffic signaling and such, I don't think it will really improve the pedestrian safety situation as it stands right now, which is definitely not great. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more slips. Last call? Okay, that's closed. Discussion? Anything else we want to relay to the applicant?
I think he's heard it all. I don't know what else. I think that part of what we're saying as the design and review would be to see how it does connect with the surroundings, and I, I think you can provide that for us. I have no question.
I think it's, it was, they ran through it here, and, and I think the staircase, you know, the staircase would provide an access. The other access is the, the extension of California Drive to Victoria that today doesn't exist. You can't go through the lumberyard to get to the, the station. You know, so there would be two other access points that would allow for pedestrian access. The, the, one aspect of the, the, Ducote's concern that I don't quite understand is that there's concern for loss of light. They want me to build a higher retaining wall. I'm not sure how that improves the light issue. Well, my understanding was they wanted trees, and that, that's okay. We can do that. But the, the balconies, we had concern, we had concerned voice, but it was about having, you know, blankets or, or dry, people drying their clothes as a, as a condominium or as an apartment house. Those are just rules that you have, that you have to enforce, and nobody wants it. The owners don't want it, and we would, we'd have to police that. The privacy issue, I'm not sure what difference it makes that it's, that it's a picture window or it's, or it's a balcony. I, I think that both are areas that people can look out, and I don't think people spend a lot of time looking down at their neighbors. I'm, I, you know, I've lived in, in high-rises. I didn't spend any time looking down at my neighbors. I look out at the view, but not down at my neighbors. So, I mean, I think it's more a subjective impression that people have that that would be an outcome. But, you know, they're entitled to what they believe. Anyway, those are...
Did you ever explore the area of integrating the two, your, you know, your project and the neighborhood, instead of separating it?
I'm not sure. What we followed was a Millbury Station area-specific plan, and in, in working with the plan, that there is a distinct change in the neighborhood. I mean, it's, you know, that's what the plan is.
Right. But it, it is a change in the neighborhood, but it could be a drastic change such as a retaining wall, or it could be something a lot softer where you could, you could walk from one to the other. I mean, all the other neighborhoods, you can walk from one neighborhood to the other.
Well, but the, our understanding, our understanding from what we understood from planning regarding Hemlock is that they did not want a connection to the project. They did not want their street to be able to be accessed from our, from our project. So, there's also a difference in, in slope there that's quite significant. So, I mean, that's what we were told. So, that's, that's one reason why it's sort of a, it's a dead end. It's because that's, that's what, the planning was told by the neighbors, that that's what they wanted. They did not want people parking there or crossing there, and so that was done. I had proposed...
Well, parking there is one thing, and crossing there, even for bikers.
Well, what we had tried to do and what we had tried to explore, but I never got any feedback on, is that there is a, there is a swath of land behind these homes that fronts on, on the rail line, okay, that, you know, you could have a five or 10-foot wide path, and I proposed to offer that to the city to, to develop that, but I don't own the land, and I'm told that it's, belongs to the old San Francisco line or something, and, and the title's all screwed up, and so that, nobody can do anything about it. So I can't, I can't offer that to somebody if I, if, if the city isn't able to get it or I'm not able to control it. So, you know, I'm still willing to look at that and to do that, but it's not something I can, I can do for the neighborhood, and I would. I've offered to, to, at one time with the Ducotes, we talked about using their home to, to create a park. That didn't go anywhere. We offered to do, there's a, there's a parcel of land at the end of Hemlock, right at Hillcrest. It's a vacant, weed-infested little plot. It'd make a great children's, you know, enclosed properly and done safely like there is on Carolyn's. There's a little children's park on Carolyn's Drive in San Mateo, where they have, they have little, you know, toddlers, a toddler's park, and we could do that. But again, I don't control that. That's a city or somebody else's property.
Let's hope this is the right time for everybody to get together and complete the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when should we continue? Do we have to do a date specific?
This is a study session. This is unto itself.
Right, but even though it's a study session, do we have to say when it's going to have... Yeah. So staff, do you have an idea of when?
Well, do we need another study session once we get the design?
Well, we need a study session to look at the design.
That's what I mean. So, okay.
Yes, through the chair, we, since we, the, the packet of the materials and information that you, you need to review and look, look at, it would be good to have another study session on, on this. I'd need to consult with interim director Brad to, to find out when would be the best, the time to schedule that. I know that there was a project, TOD 2, the other project was going to be coming back also, but is there, is there a specific date that you have in mind, or that, that you want, that you're looking at?
Depends on your schedule.
Yeah.
I think it highly depends on what time it needs in order for the applicant to come back with the things that we have asked for previously, and...
I know that the, the planning commission hearing date, November 19th, is, is pretty full. We have a lot of items on that date, so I think either like the December 3rd or the, the, the 3rd, the, the second meeting in December, December 17th, those would be options.
I know they're anxious to get it done, and why don't we, I mean, if it's okay with all of us and staff, because you're the ones working on it, so let's shoot for December 3rd. I know we have a holiday in there, but...
Is that going to give enough time to the applicant to, to get the materials?
December 3rd would work. I would, I would ask, is there any reason why it can't be a, a hearing? I mean, if we meet, if we meet what you need in the way of information, and you, you're, I mean, you just continued. If we haven't done it, we haven't done it. If we've done it, then you can vote. I mean, you know...
Well, we were looking for a study session tonight, and we've done some, but it wasn't the study session, I don't think, I'm guessing from my colleagues here, that, that we had envisioned, because we would have liked to have seen the presentation that you had up on the screen, you know, and gone over it, and been able to give you guidance on that. That's what we don't have. Yeah. So, we haven't really given you much, you know, much feedback, and I, I think it, we would, a study session might be a necessary step before we get to public hearing. We don't want to slow it down. I totally get what you're saying, but if we'd had this, we might be...
But the reality is that we're talking January.
I know.
Okay, no, no, you need to understand, the, this project potentially has an opportunity to start in the spring. It only has an opportunity to start in the spring if it starts in the spring, because we have to relocate a water line that, that drains 600 acres of Millbury, okay? 600 acres of Millbury, all the hillside, okay, comes through the lumberyard, and, and relocating that can only occur in certain months of the year, and it's, it's going to take six months in order to be able to do the excavation and relocation of that line and to create the, the garage. That can't happen as of April, okay? It's, we're already too late to make it, to make it through the rainy season. So, you know, every day counts, and you've got an election, you've got officers that are going to have to, I went through this before, okay, and I lost another month. I went from being done in November to having my next hearing in February.
So, through the chair, excuse me, another option is having a special meeting, if the commissioners are agreeable to that, and, and we're able to get the, we're able to get the materials for design review that, that you want, wanted to be able to review. We may be able to do, I guess, a special meeting.
I'm open to that. I'm open to it, too.
I greatly, 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 greatly appreciate, I mean, this is six years. This is not, I'm in my sixth year with this.
So we could get a study session in between before the December 3rd meeting?
Yeah, because...
So we could feel comfortable having a public hearing on December 3rd.
Yes.
Because 19th is full.
Yes.
I'm okay.
November 14th, that you're talking about?
Yeah, so we'll try and find a date in November.
I think one thing also to keep in mind is that, you know, obviously, you have a schedule process for this, the hearing and the design reviews and the start of construction, and I know that there's the neighborhood concerns. I think if it hasn't been posted, we, we really need to recognize the schedule for the project with the design and the construction phases, anticipated dates, because time's running out. I mean, there's a lot of concerns. It seems like you have been discussing with the neighborhood's options and trying to meet with them, but we have to realize that there's, you know, a time limit to coming up with agreements and negotiating with the neighbors and coming to some common solutions. So we should have these, you know, the whole project schedule. This hasn't been listed on the, the website. I haven't reviewed the website thoroughly to know if there's that project schedule, but we need to recognize there is a timeline and a deadline to make agreements and come up with some compromise, so that everyone knows that we have to, you know, make some decisions at some point.
Are we going to look at a study session?
Yes, staff will, will look at the, setting up a special study session.
The applicant has a lot to do here.
Right. So I, I defer to the applicant. If, do you have enough time? How much time will you need to prepare the materials?
You have issues with notification, right? And so you have to notice a meeting, and what is the time?
10 days in advance.
And they, when, let's pick, could you, I'm sorry to take everybody's time, but if you could tell me when that date would be. So if it was the 3rd, 10 days would be, what, the 26th or the, or the Friday before the 23rd? No, I know, but the notification, I mean, to go out, we have, when does it have to go out, the 23rd?
You're speaking for the December 3rd meeting?
Yeah.
We're trying to figure out when to do a study session before December 3rd.
Right, but, but, but if we're trying to get a, a hearing on December 3rd, we need to know what the, yeah, you have to go back, right? So is it the 23rd that you need to post, or is it the, or is it 26th?
For, for the December, are you talking about the December 3rd? Yeah, so 10 days before that, so, yeah, 23rd.
Okay, so you, and so, and the 19th, you already have a hearing. Does, folks, do you guys think you can do what you need to do by the 14th? Of, of November? The Wednesday. You can't notice it. Okay, what, I mean, you tell me then, I...
Could I ask, so, so that we can come prepared for you, what is it that you actually want? What is the purview of the planning commission at a study session for a project like this?
So, I'll just tell you what we did for the other TOD, right? We had something this big with that kind of information in it, and we had it in enough time to look at it in detail and give them feedback of, oh, we, we like, you know, they had lots of elements, you know. We gave them feedback on art, we gave them feedback on materials, you know, colors and, and textures and all of that. I mean, it was, signage was huge.
Streetscapes.
Yeah, I mean, it was...
Where was the signage? What did the signage look like?
I mean, basically, if you walk, if you walk down the street, what does that look like? What is the user, what is the, what is the pedestrian going to see? If I drive past a building, what am I going to see? If I have on BART, what am I going to look at? You know, if I get off the, if I get off the station, how do I get to where I want to go? And through that walking path where I want to go, what am I going to see? That's...
That sort of thing. We don't see any of that stuff in this package.
The projects are a little different. They have a lot more detail than you do, for example. So there's not going to be quite the same things, but, I mean, the boards are okay, but we don't really know what those are applying to. We don't have enough detail yet. We just, we need, we need that pretty presentation and maybe a little bit more, a bit more details.
Doesn't, you don't know what it really, I mean, we have the outside, but we don't know when you walk in that there's going to be this kind of signage here with this kind of lettering and this kind of lighting, so we can get a visual of what the design is going to be. You mentioned something about signage at the top. Well, what is the signage at the top?
Well, so, because there's not a tenant in the building...
We know that. It won't be there.
All we could do is really identify locations.
Yeah, put X, Y, Z, whatever.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, what we're hoping to do with a study session is to feel comfortable enough that we've given you enough feedbacks that what you bring back to us at the public hearing doesn't have a million questions from us. That we can look at it as a cohesive design, that we've given you feedback, we didn't really like this, and you've repaired it, that kind of thing. We want your public hearing to go smoother because we've given you feedback, because we've already seen it once, and we didn't see it. This wasn't, this isn't what we needed. That's what we need.
And like the integration within the neighborhood, I mean, what we're really seeing right now is just plot your stuff. And instead of it somehow integrating, where is that block wall that you're going to put up? This side of the street, that side of the street? So we can visualize it a little bit more. I mean, if you're going to put in a block wall...
I mean, this is an issue, on the one hand, they want us to put trees, on the other, I mean, we don't have...
Well, we're going to, some have to get that stuff figured out. We can't keep waiting to do that.
And you can draw us two samples, one with a wall and with trees and one without trees, but bring us, even if you come back with options...
We need something concrete, and I want to get it done just as much as anybody else.
And one more thing, I think, you know, we listened to some of the public comments in terms of, and we also listened to you about the history of your negotiation with the immediate neighbors on Hemlock. This is the design review. You've already gone through the entitlement process, have the developer agreement approved. You have a project, right? So it's time to really work it out with your neighbor, to figure out what they want, what you want, right? I understand from your perspective, it's a lot of money to invest in a project such as this, you know, you're losing unit on a 45-degree angle requirement. But on the other hand, you have to look at them as well. It's their life you're talking about. That's all they have. They live in that little house on Hemlock, and when that 10-story building goes up, they're boxed in. So, you know, having some sort of an agreement with your neighbor to try to mitigate their concern, whatever they might be, and they have a pretty long list of it, and, you know, we have it in a three-page document here, four-page document. Work it out with them, continue your dialogue with them, and come back to us and say, you know, we have some preliminary agreement. That would go a long way.
And if there's no agreement, then we have to figure it out. But this, we're going to talk and we're going to get together, and, I mean, we're going on for two or three years. And if you're not going to get together, then we need to know that, too. We're dealing with a project that is for the betterment of the whole city. So, I mean, you know, we have to weigh all that, but so far we've just been kind of up in the air. So we got to get something in. And if you can't get together with them and you're doing the 45-degree, which we had discussed, that's wonderful. But then give us an idea of what it's going to look like. What are you going to put there?
We can do what we can do on our property, okay? To, at the border there, whether it's a fence or trees, we can do that. That's not an issue. But I'm not sure how to integrate them into this project when, you know, that isn't what I've heard they want. I mean, they don't, they want to be left alone, and I understand that, and, you know, that's perfect, they're entitled to that. And that's what we've, that's what we've done, is tried to leave them alone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Janet Fogarty, resident of Millbrae, and also I've worked representing Vince in trying to work out this agreement with the Dakota's. And I have to say that both sides have been cordial with one another and focused on the issues, but we went through eight different iterations of an agreement and still didn't reach agreement. And then we tried just a letter of intent with just bullet points, you know? Can we agree on any of the points and then work on the, you know, the ifs, ands, and buts after that? And we still couldn't get to that agreement. The, I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding in where the ball got dropped, and that the last correspondence we had was from the Dakota's attorneys saying on May 22nd, I have the email here, and basically it says, "If we have no deal unless this is agreed to in writing by close of business Monday the 23rd, then there's no deal. Don't talk to us anymore." And so we stopped talking. I think, I'm very encouraged that I heard tonight that you'd like to continue talking because I'm a transactional attorney. I think there's always a way to make a deal, and I'd like to see a deal get made, but, you know, we have to get some, we have to get past the eight iterations we've already been through to make that happen.
And if nothing's going to happen, then we have to move forward with two different sides, and we're going to have to figure it out, I guess.
But what I heard was both sides said they're open to talking.
Exactly.
That's why I'm encouraging you to talk. Everybody, it sounds like they feel like they were doing what they thought they were supposed to do, but you're both open to talking. So please get back together. We don't need to hear that back and forth, back and forth. We don't, that's your stuff, but work it out.
Well, we will make another attempt.
Perfect. Thanks.
And try to get that done. But I would like to know, what about, given the timeline and the holidays, is there a possibility of having a hearing in early December after the 3rd? Does that, is that too tight?
Are you going to have anything? I don't...
You know, we would do everything for the 3rd for the study session, so make that the study session.
Yeah.
And then if you have a short hearing afterwards, you could decide what you're going to decide.
How soon can you...
Through the chair, I was going to suggest December 3rd, the study session, and then you come back on December 17th. That's, and that's the, you know, for the final, so...
Good.
That's, I think that's better because that'll give you enough time to get the materials and the information for December 3rd, and then, you know, that gives staff time to do the noticing.
I just want to get through you guys before the end of the year.
Well, we've been waiting for you.
Oh, believe me, you have no idea how long I've been waiting for you.
All right. So you have a plan.
And also, I actually would prefer to have at least a week ahead, you know, between the time I actually have a hearing and to the time I have the packet, right? So have the packet ahead of time, at least a week before your hearing. It's just, it's a pretty sizable packet, just to read through this.
December 3rd, we have the packet for you, hopefully addressing as many of the issues that you've raised. And then the 17th, we go to hearing, and if there's any wrap-up, we can bring it to that hearing.
Perfect.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. We're going to move on now to staff updates.
At this time, staff has no updates, so...
No? Okay. Commission comments?
Election Day tomorrow. Get out and vote.
I was going to say the same thing. I had the opportunity...
Thanksgiving is coming quickly.
Last Friday, Commissioner Quigg and I had the opportunity to attend an event hosted by Congresswoman Jackie Speer. She brought in a professor and, oh, sorry, a professor and an author. He wrote a book related to housing, and so she asked representatives from the cities, city councils and planning commissions and others to come in and listen to what he had to say and then have a conversation. It was very good. A couple of my takeaways were that, you know, housing and our shortage and everything else is the high prices of buying and renting, you know, there's a lot that feeds into it, and we probably need to start attacking them from the bottom. There's no one solution. Obviously, building more is probably the best thing we can do in the short term, but to figure out what we can do otherwise. And the other takeaway I took from it is probably we need a bit more regional coordination. You know, all the cities are trying to do what they want to do, but we all flow into each other. So maybe we could all work together better. But that was what I found at that meeting. Kathy?
Would they come back and talk about it again? I apologize, I couldn't make it to that meeting. It was noticed, I think, the same day or the day before.
The days before. I think the invitation got lost somehow, but, you know, we were there, so...
Yeah. Are they going to be able to do that again?
I'm sure she'll do something else, or if there's anything else, we'll just keep attending things, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
Also, I've been just going through the web and reviewing a lot of other communities' residential design guidelines. I know we had thoughts about putting together our own residential design guidelines. For some of these site projects, probably be good to have a schedule or a deadline to make sure we're not doing duplicate work, but I can provide draft outline soon and a lot of list of references of some other communities that I thought did a really good job of putting together residential design guidelines. And varied communities such as from, you know, small towns to large cities like San Francisco to Mountain View or Los Gatos.
Yeah, I think, you know, residential design guidelines are important in several different aspects. A lot of cities have them, and also helps the planning department to review the project ahead of time before they bring on their planning commission, so there's an easier time for approval, and it's more transparent to the applicant as well, so they have clear expectation. A lot of those aspects address is use of material, mid-block open space, height, privacy, and all the other issues that we always talk about on this commission. So if Commissioner Wong can take a first crack at it, I'll be happy to add to it as well.
All right. All right. Anything else? No other announcements?
What day is it?
It's Monday.
It's the first meeting of the month.
Yes.
So we have one more meeting before Thanksgiving.
Yes, we do. All right, we're adjourned.
And it sounds like it's going to be a busy one.